Okay, so welcome to the April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And thank you all very much, actually sincerely and truly. It was hard not to be here. Read all the minutes, let, you know, blow by blow, really. Our minutes are great. Thank you, Nancy, being normally not relying on them to know what happens in the meeting. It's a great service that you're helping to provide to the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keeping me in the loop. Um, we are just gonna quickly review the agenda tonight. So we will have time for public comment, approve the minutes. Uh, some then number five, do some administrative activities or PC organizing. Uh, because it's the start basically of a new term after the town meeting. So it's time to confirm our rules of procedure and our roles. Then we will have a discussion with S J of the idea that the Housing Committee and the Planning Mission have been working on of recommending a housing targets resolution to the Select Board. Then Linda will provide an update on the wastewater feasibility study. Will be some planning and organizing, hear from people about things that have happened and things that will happen in the future. Uh, we will have an executive session if required and then adjourn. So with that, do we have any adjustments or changes or deletions from the agenda? Okay, reason we're doing that is because it's in our rules of procedure that we're supposed to do that. We never did it before, so we're gonna follow our rule and procedure. Okay, so with that, then the next item is public comment. So welcome to people who are here with us tonight. Does anybody wanna offer any comments to the Planning Commission? Um, and we are happy to hear from you. Have any questions or comments? And ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, if you could use the raise hand function, and if you're here, please sign in. And let us know if you have a comment. Chuck?
Um, will there be comments when you're discussing the resolution?
Yes. Okay, hearing no further public comments, the next item is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Sarah, and then I'll ask for a motion to second, which we're all supposed to do, also supposed to do before we discuss the minutes. So do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Heidi seconded. Say, do we have any corrections or updates to the minutes? Okay, if not, then um, vote to approve the minutes. Please say yay.
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 Eric? Sabina? Okay, and I'll abstain since I wasn't here. Uh, okay, so the next item is to approve the um positions of the Planning Commission. So I think first we have to have a nomination of a chair.
I would like to nominate Susan for second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anybody else wanna be the chair? I don't have to be the chair. Okay, all those in favor, I'm happy to be the chair. I love being the chair, actually. I.
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 Okay, um, next is nomination for the clerk. So Sarah's currently our clerk, so I'd like to renominate Sarah to be clerk.
I second.
Wendy seconds.
And does anyone else want, I'll ask the same as Susan, does anyone else want that position? I am not attached to it. I don't have to have it. No, okay. I'm happy to do it.
Greatful.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of electing Sarah as our clerk for this year? I. Yeah, unanimously elected.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and then the next item is to adopt our rules of procedure. So Linda sent a copy of the rule of procedure. It's basically the same as last year. We clarified public comments are limited to three minutes per person at the beginning of the meeting and then also as part of the agenda when appropriate. Um, I think that's the only actual change.
Do you want to have Sabina share it just so we can?
Sure.
Show what, like, there's different sections and just kind of remind ourselves of what's in each section.
Sure.
Because when I read through it, I was like, oh, okay.
Right.
We should start doing that.
That's what I was saying, oh, we're supposed to adjust the agenda at the beginning of each meeting.
Yeah, like that was one of the things, but just so we all, you know, are familiar with it.
Is that visible to you?
Not yet.
Oh, yes, it is. Okay, uh, it's a little small.
Yeah, can you make it like twice as big?
I can. Hold on, let me find the Zoom.
Um, basically, this format is follows the recommendation from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And it's um, the only variations on it are what are the dates of our meetings? Where do we post our notices? Linda and I talked a little bit about making sure that we understood the difference between a regular meeting notice and a special meeting notice. And so I would assume like a, the community forum or um, other meetings that we have outside of the first and third. But basically, when we went through it, the procedure is the same.
Yeah, we do the same thing regardless of it's a regular meeting, special meeting, or, well, if it's an emergency meeting, then it's, it only requires notice if there is time, but for a special meeting and a regular meeting, we're gonna post it in a safe place and then follow the same procedures.
Um, it says we have a chair and a clerk. It says, one thing I do think that's important is that it does say that our votes um, to approve, which it requires a quorum of the commission, not a majority of the those present. And I think we should be mindful of that, which is so that we're seven people. So we need at least four affirmatives to approve an action, which I guess since we don't have a meeting without a quorum, that pretty much, but like if we had a meeting with five people, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't approve something with three of the five. We would need four. Um, and I, I think that's a good practice, that, you know, things aren't getting rammed through without appropriate transparency. Um, so that's, those are pretty much the rules of procedure. So this is about organizing us, and the next page is about public comment and the agenda.
I don't know how much you can see at one time, so just tell me when I should scroll down.
Yeah, you just, perfect. So now we can see agendas and meetings that are meetings, our notices are required forty-eight hours ahead. We need it to town hall. We publish our notices in certain places, including front porch forum and on the website. And then, yeah, Sabina, you can scroll down now to um, I think the last section. Uh, so public participation explains that, like we did tonight, we have an open public comment and then we'll have a public comment around a specific agenda items. And it, we also did add that comments from the public can be submitted to Linda as our staff person at any time. So if someone provides an email to Linda, that is considered public comment and part of the public record. And we've tried to reassure people in our meetings, this isn't the only minute you get to weigh in on this particular thing. There's very few meetings where the, we draw the line in the sand and a decision is made. A lot of things are sort of incrementally moved along, like tonight with the housing resolution. Okay, any other, any comments or questions or concerns about the rules of procedure?
Is there anything else there, Sabina, that we should, and um?
Um. I don't think so. I think we've hit it all and I'm at the bottom, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think we've.
Were you raising your hand or stretching? Raising your hand?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
So I, I'd like to suggest that the, it'd be amended to say that the chair has the right to limit public comment to three minutes. Because that, that to me is kind of a rigid rule. Some ideas do take a little while to get out. I think it, it basically you're saying that the Planning Commission will never have a conversation with somebody. And um, which puts the public in the position, I guess, of calling people if there's, you know, kind of a complex idea. But I, 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 I do think it's important that the chair has the right to limit public comment. Give everybody a fair chance, divide it up, make sure public comment doesn't dominate your meeting, absolutely have that right. But to be rigid about it, I think is a mistake.
Um, it does say that the PC can increase the time for public comment. So it provides that flexibility. It's a little bit of the glass.
And it says the chair shall allocate time to members of the public.
Yeah, I think the chair should do that.
Yeah.
As opposed to a volunteer.
It said, is, is number, in number two, does that address Chuck's concern? The chairs allocate time to members of the public.
I can't read it from here, so if it's already in there, great.
Yeah, it's not exactly what you said, but the intent is this, is the same.
I'm sorry, does it? Does it need to be bigger?
It says we would provide up to fifteen minutes for open public comment. That would be at the beginning of the meeting, which is different than an agenda topic, which Linda goes through and tries to figure out how much time each topic is going to take so we can figure out whether or not we can run through the agenda. And then at, in any point in time, we can increase the time for public comment. Either, yeah, on the PC can, not just the chair.
Okay, and then there's the last sentence.
Right. That is about, that has the three, up to three minutes per person.
That, that's what Chuck was speaking to.
Right, we would be able to increase the time for public comment, to come back around, to continue to increase it. So try to build in an expectation, but allow for flexibility. No. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt rules of procedure?
I'll move for that.
I'll second.
A second. Any comments, further comments or changes or edits? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the rules of procedure? I.
I.
Okay, so the rules of procedure are adopted. Thank you very much.
Before we move on.
Yes.
Need signatures.
Yes, okay.
So I'm going to pass it around.
Okay.
For your signature at the bottom here.
Thank you.
Gina, the number two.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just right here?
Um.
Adopted or signatures, where do you want me?
Uh, either place. We just, I added these lines so that there'd be more space in your signature, so sign it anywhere.
I'm in your way.
Thank you. So um, Eric and Sabina can sign the next one that you're here, not in the, at town hall.
And Chris.
Oh, yeah, and Chris.
I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Thank you. Um, okay, the next topic is to confirm our liaison roles. So the prior chair, Jason Chaney, implemented this practice. And other committees have done the same and we've continued it. It seems like it's been really valuable. Um, liaison role just basically asks the PC person to pay attention to their assigned committee and attend meetings or communicate with the chair when, when you can. It's not like a mandate, you have to do it. If we had outreach activities, it would be the liaison's role to outreach to that particular group. So for example, coming up for the May third forum, I would ask all the liaison people to reach out to your groups. Um, so this is a list of my current understanding of liaison roles, subject to discussion tonight, or changes that people might wanna make. If you're tired of your committee, if you feel like you have too many things, if you have a new interest and wanna make a change, we can discuss that tonight. So I'll give everybody a minute to take a look at it. I don't think it's much, the, much different, except that Sarah came off trails and on to the Community Development Court.
I asked for that switch, but Chris was pretty passionate about not switching. So Chris is the Community Development Court person.
To stay.
Chris is Community Development.
Yep, so we never switched.
And we previously hadn't really had a specific liaison to that group until more recently.
But he's been um, going to all the meetings.
So then are you willing to stay back with trails?
Um.
Or would you rather do something different?
Sarah, would you like to do education? Because I am totally not a school board education.
I was just gonna say, I have no background in education, so I'm open to that.
Um, but you said you didn't wanna do trails, but I also think Sabina and I have been talking about that trails probably, which is a larger discussion, Trails Committee probably needs a revamp overall. They're not specifically accomplishing what their charter says, and they're not attracting new members. They've lost almost all their members recently. So I think there's a lot of room there, and I think that's a bigger discussion than who is the liaison. So you can keep my name on there for now, but just understand it may not be called Trails. It may be something else in the future.
And I added, begin, when we were getting ready for the meeting, Sabina reminded me that she and Wendy were the food, going to be Food, Food Hub Task Force. So I added them at the bottom.
Okay, so Wendy, you have a lot.
Yeah, I have not been paying much attention to the Energy Task Task Force as of late, since I started with. I can say, Wendy, I've been going to the Energy Task Force meetings recently, so if you wanna split that one with me again, and we can just, you know, we can just be back each other up for that, but I've been to the last three meetings. Okay. Um, so let's, if that's okay with you, otherwise I'm happy to do it.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
Nice.
Sure.
And then, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you can go.
I was just gonna say, I'm noticing that Chris is assigned to three if he's keeping the Community Development Court. I could backfill on mobs for sure if that would be useful.
Yeah, we actually didn't, have never really had a specific liaison to mobs, so that would be new, so that would be great.
Okay.
Because you'd be able to establish.
Is Tri-Town Transportation anything that even meets?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that group.
I feel like that is very old and possibly dormant.
Um, are they called something else now?
I don't think so. I mean, like, I haven't even, I mean, I see they have a page on the website, but it's, yeah. I don't know, we, well, we could ask Chris for sure when he's back, but I don't think they do anything. I never get minutes. I never get agendas. There's nothing happening.
I don't know if they consider themselves like a bona fide town group or if they're more like a grassroots group that.
Didn't they present to the Planning Commission um, summer of two thousand and nineteen about what they were doing to work with the Chittenden Transportation Unit there, the, the bus company, to increase bus services? And they talked about ridership, but I don't recall hearing anything from them before that one point or anything since then.
Yeah, but I have this vague recollection that the Tri, that the Food Hub people met and ca, and, and were spawned by the Tri-Town Group. So maybe we should just leave that as an aside. Like I said, it's not really a formal role. There's not really a heavy lift. It's really, except like, if there's a project. Like when we worked on the Climate Action Update, we worked a lot with the Energy Task Force. When we worked on the National Resources Overlay, we worked a lot with Conservation Commission. Um, when we thought we were gonna work on the official map, we were talking to the Trails Committee more. But in any event, so I think it's fine to have that, to have that be like an open question. And maybe as you guys start to talk to the Food Hub people, you could try to clarify what their relationship is with the Tri-Town Group.
Sure.
Okay, so we don't have to like officially adopt this. It's just more getting everybody on the same page now. So are we good with it the way that it's presented? No?
I really should not be the person on the school board.
Okay.
I mean, they had a, if, I, I think they are super, super organized. They have a lot of meetings and a lot of passion, and I don't have that for the school board.
What's a lot of meetings?
Um, can you tell me how many meetings they have? Oh. They have at least month, every other, every other week, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Um, Chuck, you know that. How often does the school board?
The school board does, but it, you know, very rarely talks about specific schools or the schools in Jericho.
Oh, is that true? Okay.
It just seems a little odd that, it might be confusing to them to have a representative from both the Planning Commission and then I know they contact John on stuff having to do with uh,
Well, yeah.
Whatever, and I, I feel like you could go to the, either the board or the schools whenever you need to. But the idea of keeping track of one more thing as opposed to doing another.
Well, yeah, so you guys correct me.
Seem, yeah, I'm surprised that there is such a thing.
So correct me if I'm wrong, the intent is to have a person who's familiar with the people and the goings on, not necessarily a person who's present at every single meeting and participates and brings things, but is a liaison. So that if there was a topic, if there was a conversation, that there is a designated person among us who's familiar with that group and knows their names and has their contact information and has a general pulse on what's going on, doesn't necessarily have to be an expert. I know I haven't gone to every single Trails Committee meeting, because sometimes they get so deep in the weeds that I give, I give the Planning Commission update and then I'm, I'm, I read the meeting notes after.
Yeah, keep in mind also that the school board is composed of Underhill, Jericho, Richmond, Bolton, and Huntington, so.
Right.
We're seeing more, yes, we have the high school, but much of what they talk about is for the district as a whole, not for Jericho.
Yeah, I think that's what Chuck was also saying, Eric. That makes perfect sense. So the, so the question is there, is there an equivalent though, that maybe not the school board, but something else that's just more Jericho specific? That would be useful. I mean, I do have a relationship with the chair of the school board, which I'm happy to invoke and be involved in. But I would need some, I'm a kind of an all, like, I'm, I'm worried about the fact that I tend to assume that I need to be all in. So your clarification, Sarah, was really useful. And I also don't wanna be named if there's somebody else who, this is their jam and they wanna do it like that. I would, I am there, but I am not someone who has ever been very engaged in the schools or connected in it.
I think it would make total sense for you to invite one or two people, the chair, somebody else in Jericho's on the school board, to just come in once a year and talk about everything that's going on. And then, uh, and, and then other stuff can be, but see, they're changing too, you know, it's like, we have two committees with changing.
We, we've never had a liaison to the school board before.
Okay, so this is.
I, it was new. I was suggesting it kind of thinking that because we would be working on the town plan and because I expect the schools to be a prominent element of the town plan in some way. I thought it might be a good idea, like Sarah said, just to have somebody like, when and if we ever wanna communicate with the school board, there's like a go-to person, so that it doesn't fall, otherwise all the, everything's gonna roll with Linda. Right, so that, that was really the goal. But I could see, I mean, also the school board are elected and they do work for all the towns. And maybe it's not appropriate to have them on here and that we would be better off having a formal outreach when and if it was important to communicate with the school board.
Yeah, and I'm also wondering too, that just if I could riff a little bit in a different place. I also wondered, Susan, if it was here because of all the conversation we've had around the importance of this school buildings and not the school board decisions, but the buildings in particular, thinking about um, the middle school and the connection with the property and wastewater and build out. And that, that just seems like having someone who understands the building issues, like what it means to be in that property and manage that, that is what makes sense.
That's John Adams.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, John.
Okay.
John is involved.
All right, so I, I would be inclined to take it off. I think if it's not clear, we should probably leave it out and opportunistically communicate with them when and if we need to.
Okay.
What do you guys think about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I, I will just say if, if we're up for any changes, something that I am passionate about is Development Review Board.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's very closely tied to my day job and I feel more knowledgeable in that area.
Do you have time to add it? Because I'd love to.
And I was gonna ask, if I don't do the Trails Committee, then I have time to add it. So that's a tough one. If I can hand something off, then yes, I have time, because do they meet once a month or do they meet twice a month?
You know, they meet twice a month, but as needed based on application. So through the holiday, I don't think they met from like November to February or something.
Yeah, they had a while.
So it sort of comes and goes. That you can totally do remotely. You can totally read minutes. It's kind of like, you know when there's a decision and you know when there's preliminaries.
So that works for me because winter is really hard for me, but the rest of the year is way easier.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and I put Linda on there as a co, just because you, not just because, but you're the professional and you share the office with John.
Yeah, well, with Chris.
Um, but that's what I meant, Chris.
Yeah, and I often know what's going on in the realm. Well, I'm starting to know.
Yeah.
I will know.
Osmosis.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So you can take me off of that.
Yourself off there, okay.
Yeah.
If that still leaves Sarah on the Trails Committee.
Right, so I don't, maybe I should take Trails.
That's again.
But I don't know, I just am worried about the time.
Yes, and I'm worried about the time because, again, I think they are really in a strange place.
But they meet once a month.
Sure.
But maybe a strange place is good for me, you know?
Yeah, I think they could use some strong leadership and some really direct questions about, are you fulfilling your mission? You've lost most of your members. Here's some of the feedback and here's the need within the community, which is about connectivity and less about them um, blazing new trails.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Okay, I'll give it a shot.
Yep.
If you're, if everybody's okay with that.
Yep, and Sabina and I can give you some background, because Sabina's also um, heard some good, has some good thoughts about it.
Okay.
So the question is, Sabina, are you overstarched? Yeah, Sabina's name's on there many times.
Well, but I also serve on those other committees, so it's, does double dipping, you know? I'm on the board of the Jericho Underhill Land Trust, so it's not extra work. I'm on the Conservation Commission, so, oh, it's a commission, P S, not a.
Oh, yeah. Um. It's not, maybe it's a commission.
And so, you know what I'm saying? It's not extra for me because I'm on those, I'm part of those groups. Um, and then, like I said, I've been going to the Energy Task Force meetings just out of personal interest, and so um, that's not a problem, and then Wendy and I um, can just share responsibility on the Food Hub. So I'm okay. I'll let you know if it's too much. Thank you though.
Yeah, is there a role for anyone from the Planning Commission with C C R P C or is that as staff? Like, how, that's okay, because that was the only group that wasn't here that I, I wondered. I mean, I know we have relationships. I just didn't know who helped them.
Yes, I mean, I'm in regular contact and um, Catherine McMahons is on, is the chair of their board.
Fabulous, I didn't know that. Okay, awesome.
Um, should we turn the lights on? Um, okay, so, does everybody think for the moment they could live with the list?
That looks like S G.
S J has her hand up, you guys.
Oh, okay.
S J.
I just wanted to clarify that I think that um, the Food Hub grew out of Transition Town, Jericho, not Tri-Town Transportation.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Oh, I thought they were the same thing.
I'm gonna tease.
That I don't know.
Oh, I don't think they're.
They're not. Well, then, so.
They're definitely not the same thing.
So do, and does it, is anybody familiar enough with the organization to know whether or not we should have um, our eyes on them?
You mean Transition Town?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm familiar with them. Yeah, I do, I go to their meetings too. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to, I mean. And the leaders of Food Hub are also the leadership of the Transition Town.
That's why I thought it was the same. Yeah, okay, so it's totally.
There's a lot of overlap, so I think we've got it covered by just saying we're a part of the Food Hub group.
Yeah.
Okay, we can revisit this at any time.
All right.
All right, right, ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, thank you everyone. So the next topic is the housing targets resolution. And um if Sabina could bring up the overview of that.
Slowing.
Is that the presentation? I slipped, I slipped some slides into the presentation that you sent Susan, so I don't know if we wanna. Hop back and forth or um.
Or maybe then S J, would you mind? Would you mind being the screen share person and showing it from your computer?
Yeah, I don't mind as long as that's, that works for you all.
Sure.
Oh, you're saying there's a different version out there?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, oh, it says my Zoom quit, but.
Change your screen, sorry.
Alright, I'm gonna stop sharing so that S J can share. Wait.
And this one? Chuck, if you can't see the screen, you can turn the light up on that side, it might be easier to see.
I can what?
Yeah, I think that's why everything was like that, cause you know, it was sharing.
But those two are out.
There we go, which is the, thank you, it was just covering.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Perfect, okay. So S J, you want to walk it through or do you want me to or hand it off?
Um, this is, this is your story, you go, you go right ahead.
Okay. Okay, um, so just to quickly go through. This idea of a housing resolution is to, the purpose of tonight's. Discussion is to bring the planning commission members all up to speed, put us all on the same page. And then look forward to what's gonna happen next. Um, we don't really have time for like a super detailed discussion tonight, but a little bit of feedback and a little bit of. Validation that people are comfortable with the direction and then figuring out how to get that detailed discussion to happen. Um, so I'm just gonna walk through these items, what is a resolution? Why a housing resolution for Jericho? What's the process? What does a housing construction goals resolution look like? Drafted, and then what are the next steps? Okay, so a resolution is something that boards. Municipalities, cities, councils use all the time. We just don't have to use it very often in Jericho. In Burlington, everything they do pretty much is through a resolution. And a resolution is generally to accomplish these goals, to state a position. To chart a future course, to give advice, a lot of, to express sentiment. Most importantly for our purposes is to clarify goals. And oftentimes a resolution can be temporary. So I just read online recently that some board made a resolution that they were. Wishing happy birthday to somebody. And then in another resolution, a board might say that they um. That they are in support of um an infrastructure bill. You know, like if you're Disney in Orlando, you're probably doing a lot of resolutions about your issues around. Um, statements of how government policy affects the board. Um, so that's what a resolution is. And um then you can go to the next slide, so. On the left side, those are what is resolution, on the right side is the companion. How that translates to a housing resolution for Jericho, so if a resolution is to state a position. Housing resolution for Jericho can say, we need more housing, that's the position statement. Expresses sentiment, it's really important to the town, it's important to the community for various reasons. A resolution can give advice. And um housing resolution for Jericho can say, planning commission do this. Affordable housing committee do that. Um, most importantly, it can clarify goals. Which um can be expressed as quantified housing targets. Uh, can chart a future course and in terms of a resolution, it can say, here's what the town plan should do, here's what zoning should do. Here's what we should work with for partnerships in the community. And a resolution might be temporary, and so a housing resolution for Jericho can be structured to be reviewed on a regular basis. Um, there's definitely a question about, you know, why do we? Is it really prudent to identify targets and? I've thought about this a bit and S J and I have talked about it, Linda and I have talked about it, I think it's important for the P C. To understand if we think it's important and um. You know, growing up in a, in, from a business environment, you know, you, you have to have goals that you can measure against. And you have stretch goals and you have reasonable goals and you have measurable goals and. Everybody's marching to the same tune and I just sort of can't imagine. Not knowing what we're shooting for because if the town. Wants to direct policy or make decisions or make investments or hire employees or. Create job descriptions or create zoning regulations. It seems to me like irresponsible to do any of those things without defining what you're trying to achieve. In a way that you can measure. So the resolution came about thinking through. You know, we're trying to make sense of all of what our priorities are and, and, and thinking that. To have structure and to have want to tease would be really helpful, helpful, not. To, you know, put a bat, to put a gun to anybody's head, but helpful to set the scale and to set the context. So that was sort of the motivation. Okay, so the next slide explains where we are in the process. So originally, I think I might have brought this idea of the planning commission, planning commission talked about it, said, good idea. The, we provided um a request to the affordable housing committee and said. We'd like to do a resolution, but we're not the experts, you are becoming the experts in affordable housing, housing in Jericho. And what would be required and we would really appreciate it if you would. Um, if you would develop targets. So um, I'm sort of paraphrasing exactly how it happened, but basically um. S J agreed and S J led a process with the affordable housing committee over several months. Where they deliberated, they discussed, they did research, they argued, they calculated. Targets, which would be reasonable in their view targets. In addition, they defined housing types and income parameters and provided context and definition. To support the targets. And um I provided a template to S J. Of um a resolution, I looked at school board, actually the school board is another entity that does a lot of things through resolutions, which is. How I found out about it in the first place. Um, and used a model resolution from the school board, provided it to the affordable housing committee. They worked on it and then they provided it back to Linda and. Linda and Wendy worked on it and then I worked on it a little bit more. So right now there's like a draft. In progress. The goal is that the select board would adopt a housing resolution. And so in order to get that, accomplish that goal, then the steps would be for the. Planning commission and the affordable housing committee to approve the final version of the document and we would say. We vote yes to make this recommendation, kind of like the ARPA recommendation to propose this to the select board. Hopefully in May, and then the select board would review our proposal and review the housing resolution and. Adopt it or not. Um, based on what they, what their priorities are. Um, thinking about it though, whether. I think it's, it would be important to put it forward irrespective of what. They decide to do with it, kind of like our, our recommendation. Okay, so that's the process. So then what is in a resolution? So a resolution basically consists of two parts. The first part is, are the, these statements whereas, and the second part is therefore. So the first part whereas says, these are the facts on the ground, this is the context, this is why. This is why it's important, but it's not a lot of pontification, it's not a lot of political statements, it's. Generally very fact-based and a resolution is typically structured to go from the global to the mi- macro to the micro. So this is what's happening in the country with housing, this is what's happening in Vermont with housing. Chittenden County, Jericho, that's how the facts are, would be laid out. Now therefore is, okay, so what are we gonna do about it? We think we want to, we are going to, we are committed to. But um a resolution is really a statement of intent, so it's not an ordinance. And it's not a law and it's not binding and it's generally a little, can be less formal. Than an ordinance. So in some ways you might say like, what, what's the point then? Why should we really do it? Um, if it's not gonna be an ordinance and it's not gonna be binding and I think the reason we should still do it is because. We are building a sequential foundation of commitment. Where we would go from um a housing resolution to the town plan. Which is a more formal manifestation of that. To zoning regulations which are in ordinance or to spending money like buying land or. Partnering with Champlain Housing Trust or some other entities. And it seems like you, you know, you can't go from zero to a hundred, especially in a public process. And I also think it's an opportunity for the community to understand how this progression unfolds. Okay, so that's what, how the resolution is structured. The draft right now then is for a resolution for Jericho, for Jericho for housing construction goals. And it's time limited twenty-four to twenty-eight. And this is mostly the product of now what the affordable housing committee developed. Um, so the next slide explains the whereas of the draft. At a high level, this is not quote for quote what's in the document in the draft and um we can share the draft after this. After, maybe after its next revision, but basically it goes through and it lays out that Vermont, the state. Um documented a needs assessment that. Validated a stagnant growth of housing, that's not keeping up with the number of people moving to Vermont, the number of households that are formed. And the demands of employers and economic growth. Uh, the, something called the Vermont Consolidated Plan calls for safe, decent and affordable housing and more for as a social justice. Rational, the first one is more of an economic rationale, the second one is more of an economic rationale. These are all third-party sources, not. Um, the next is that Chittenden County, the regional planning commission and the Champlain Housing Trust and Evernorth, which is a nonprofit. Housing developer are on their second iteration of the Building Homes Together campaign, which we've all learned a lot about. Which sets up a goal, an actual numeric goal, to build five thousand new homes in that time period. With a lot more detail around those and a certain percentage of them to be affordable. Uh, then it's noted that the school district has declining enrollment. Which increases pressure on property taxes. That um the observation from the data that Jericho has. Become less socio-economically diverse. Uh, V H F A data shows Jericho incomes and house prices are higher than the area median. And as a result of understanding this data. The planning commission and the affordable housing committee are recommending that actual targets be set. So that's kind of the whereas of the resolution. Um, therefore, it basically. Says that Jericho needs to establish a framework. Why set targets? Cause we need a framework, we need a framework to guide policies, investments and decisions. We need a framework to address needs for housing growth and economic growth. And we're gonna establish this framework by setting targets for construction twenty-four to twenty-eight. And there's kind of like two types of goals, the first goal are the target rates. And um the more, it's not a second goal, but it's more of like another dimension of the goals. Are how this might occur by encouraging these various housing types. Um, so under the target rates, the affordable housing committee developed specific targets for each of these. Types of units and they also attached into the resolution. Specific definitions for what each of these things means. Relying on state and, and county and best practice definitions, they didn't just come up with all their own definitions. But they applied it for Jericho. And then housing types to really drive home the point that it's a diversity of housing types, that's the. That's the limiter and um one of the statements in the whereas is that zoning has historically. Favored single household units on larger lots and that that needs to be corrected. So that's basically the therefore section of the resolution, okay.
Um, so I will try to be um brief but clear. Um, to give you a, to give you all a sense of um where the targets came from, so the, the targets being. Total number of new dwelling units, how many missing middle units do we want? How many affordable units do we think should be included? Um, and the, the good news is that all of this data should be really familiar to all of you, cause I, I've presented this to, to you all a couple of times. Either at P C meetings or at um the select board meetings. Um, so I won't go through it all in detail, but just to give you an idea. Um, of what we took into consideration to come to these numbers and also to give you some context. So that you understand where these numbers fit um within a broader picture. Um. Sorry, my dog wants to be a part of the presentation too. So first is um total new dwelling units, so um really thinking about. Um, looking at our rate of growth. And we took a lot of different things into consideration and trying to come up with how many new units do we feel like um Jericho. Uh, needs in the next five years, um and you know, what, what rate of growth, yearly growth. Um, is feasible for Jericho, is something that Jericho can handle, um makes a significant contribution to um the issue or to the problem. Um, and so we used um the Building Homes Together campaign, um the, the county campaign. Um, to kind of understand the scale of the county's goals, um and then considered our role within the county. And we looked at our role within the county in many different ways, we looked at percent of households, we looked at uh percent population, we looked at. Um, our distance from dense urban centers, um we, we kind of. Looked at the, um, at the county map and at the building homes together um goals from a lot of different angles to kind of. Think about uh what our contribution to those goals mean, but again, those I think are nice because they're. First of all, informed by policy experts who, who have uh gone to school for this and have, have been thinking about these problems uh for a long time. They're informed by the statewide housing needs assessment. Um, and are really particular then drilled down to Chittenden County members. Um, we also looked at growth rates in Jericho over time to kind of understand. What the rate of development has looked like during some of our largest booms, um and what things have looked like over the last. um, and what things have looked like over the last couple of decades. Um, and taking all of those kinds of things into account, um, we settled on thirty units a year. Um, this is pretty consistent with um, three percent of Building Homes Together's target, um, which reflects that Jericho has three percent of Chittenden County households. Um, this is just ten uh, ten more units than the number of units per year that were built in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So it's not um, it's not a drastic um, overreach of of what we've recently seen the market um, producing. Um, and it's on par with the greater the rate of growth that was seen in the eighties. Um, and so uh, that is something that um, Jericho has a history of being able to um, absorb. Um, the next um, from this slide, the next two are looking at um, the number of missing middle units and the number of affordable units. Um, and so I'm just going to quickly flash this at you. Um, this is kind of a pared down version of um, Vermont Housing Finance Agency's maximum rent and purchase price affordability thresholds by income and household size for twenty twenty two. Um, so V H F A produces um, these every year. Um, and basically affordability is calculated um, based on your the median area income, the area median income, sorry, A M I. Um, and so low, what we would consider low income and affordable to low income folks would be this um, eighty percent A M I or less. And then you can see if you kind of follow this over um, what's affordable to um, a household making eighty percent A M I for Chittenden County in twenty twenty two, a three bedroom house of three hundred eight thousand dollars. Um, in between that eighty percent and a hundred twenty percent is this missing middle sweet spot that we've been hearing so much about. So these are folks who make more money than um, so they're not eligible for a lot of either subsidies or some of the um, some of the other housing programs and mortgages and things that are available specifically to the lower income folks. But they're not making enough to be able to compete in uh, the market. Um, and so this is uh, the between eighty and a hundred twenty percent. And so what we've done historically in the Affordable Housing Committee is just kind of use these numbers as our benchmark. So anything less than three hundred thousand uh, is affordable to the low income group. Um, anything that's between four hundred thousand and three hundred thousand is affordable to that missing middle. And so in trying to think about for our town, um, how do we determine goals for number of units for each of these demographic groups or um, economic groups? Um, we first wanted to just understand what our town looks like, what our housing stock looks like. Um, and so I think you'll all remember that we looked at the grand list to do this. I presented this data a few months ago now. Um, and so the grand list isn't great because for a number of reasons. But one of the reasons is because our last appraisal was in twenty sixteen and everyone knows that a lot of things have changed since twenty sixteen. Um, but it's what we've got. And so what we did was we looked at um, the the V H F A affordable um, purchase price affordability calculations from twenty sixteen and used those numbers to determine our eighty percent and one hundred twenty percent kind of cutoffs to define our low and middle groups. And by using those twenty sixteen numbers, we're many of the houses that are on the grand list now were built after twenty sixteen and are and are going to reflect prices that are that are more uh, modern than that. Um, so this is a really conservative estimate, but even just using those cutoffs because they were what we had at the time. Um, thirteen percent of the residential parcels on the grand list um, would have been affordable to a low income uh, household in twenty sixteen and forty one percent would have hit that missing middle. Um, and so using that information to just kind of get an idea of, okay, well, what is our housing stock currently look like in terms of um, what do we have that are affordable to low, middle and high income folks? We also have other data. We know that sixteen percent of homes in Jericho are something other than single family detached, which is low, but it it's a low percentage and hopefully something that we can uh, boost up in the coming next five years. But um, it's a nice benchmark. We know that twenty percent of Jericho's Jericho's occupied housing units are small and by small, I mean two bedrooms or less. Um, and uh, as you can kind of intuit, a smaller house is often more affordable than a larger house with more bedrooms. Um, and eleven percent of Jericho's housing is rental. And so kind of taking all of that information into account, uh, we settled on a goal of twenty percent of the new dwelling units to be affordable to individuals or families with low or very low income. Um, and so at our target rate of thirty uh, new units a year, that would be six units a year or out over the five years, we'd be adding thirty affordable um, low affordable units. Um, thirty percent uh, missing middle. And then um, the remaining fifty percent high now. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, um, I think I mentioned we've built uh, we built roughly twenty houses a year in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And so if you think about that twenty um, in terms of this kind of development rate, um, we're shifting some of those twenties into the missing middle and then we're adding on um, some some smaller and missing middle homes in addition to what the market is already producing. And the whole take home message here is, as we all know, if we leave it up to the market, we're just going to keep getting really big homes that aren't affordable for um, for moderate and lower income families. Um, and so then the last, the last two kind of target numbers that that we came up with were specific targets around the number of perpetually affordable units we'd like to see in the next five years and um, the number of age restricted units in the next five years. Um, and so to do this for perpetually affordable units, so these are units that are um, through deed and usually overseen by some outside entity like Champlain Housing Trust or Cathedral Square. These are units that are perpetually affordable to folks making making eighty percent A M I or less. We currently have five of these um, shared equity homes with Champlain Housing Trust. Additionally, the Jerry Hill Apartments are also perpetually affordable. Um, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, Richmond added four units of perpetually affordable housing. Um, and Harvest Crossing plans to add about seven to ten uh, in Underhill. So again, kind of using these numbers to come up with a target. Um, we also know that the J C D C is interested in doing these kinds of projects and perhaps has a railroad crossing um, in mind for this kind of work. So that speaks to the feasibility of this. So um, we're hopeful for ten new units and these can be either um, shared equity homes or rental units. In terms of senior housing, um, again, I mentioned Jerry Hill, but that is also age restricted in addition to being perpetually affordable. Um, and we know that there is a a large need in our community for folks um, wanting to to downsize um, and wanting to age in place or age in Jericho. Um, to the point where uh, I think many of you are familiar with Wisdom House, um, which is a a group of local folks who are hoping to to make this kind of housing happen um, and build it for themselves, um, which again speaks to feasibility. Uh, so the number we hit here was fifteen. So that's kind of the the background for where the numbers, when you do see this um, this draft of this resolution, where these numbers came from and hopefully gives you some kind of idea about where they sit in the in the bigger picture. Um, and there's, you know, there's lots of other data and pieces of information that that I can share if you have specific questions about that in the future. Um, before I turn it back over to Susan um, to close this out, I do want to push that one of one of the targets that we felt was really important to include um, in this resolution is something around infrastructure. Um, and with the recognition that little of this can be done without some infrastructure. Um, and I know that we have a wastewater feasibility study happening and that decisions will have to be made. Um, and I I think that 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 is uh, that's great that that's happening. Um, that's happened before. Uh, and if we can come up with some kind of um, target or goal that is a little bit more concrete than just following the stages of what's already in motion and and kind of pushes um, the envelope a little bit with um, with infrastructure, I think that that's something the Affordable Housing Committee feels really strongly about. Um, so I just want to leave you with that kind of nugget as I hand it off to Susan to close this out.
But Wendy, it looked like you had a question.
I did, I said that clarification on some some of the numbers. So the the ten perpetually affordable units, that's ten within the twenty percent.
So
Yep.
Ten of the twenty, ten of the thirty units are perpetually affordable. And then where does the fifteen units of age restriction fit in? Does that fit in under the uh, missing middle or is that also part of the twen- uh, part of the um, uh,
It it can be, it can be where
Wherever.
Wherever, whatever.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I get it now. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, and it's a good question and it's one of the things that we very early on struggled with. Um, you know, we started to go down this road of like, well, we want, we want to make sure that there's multifamily housing. So should we put a number on the number of multifamily units? And should we put a number on this, that and the other thing? And it became um, you know, you know, micromanaging isn't isn't useful and it's it's also, we're not the developers. We don't want to um, we don't want to create so many restrictions that that these things aren't happening. We want to be realistic. Um, and so there's lots of different ways that you can create housing that fulfills many of these targets. And what I hope is that um, at the end of each year, we can sit down with these goals and with these uh, housing type priorities and have lots of different kinds of metrics to be able to say, we made a really big impact on multifamily units. Gosh, we we actually got a lot of multifamily units in the last two years. Um, but we haven't, we haven't made any dent on age restricted. Um, and at the same time, thirty percent of those were missing middle. So great, so it's, I don't know if that helps clarify.
It does. Thank you, S J.
Mm hmm.
Thank you for the presentation.
Any other questions on the numbers for S J? Okay, then just to wrap this up, I think we had one more. Um, so then the resolution, the draft goes on to say in order therefore, be it further resolved, that in order to meet these targets or something to that effect, we would do the following. Complete the wastewater study and actually make a decision and decide whether to invest and where to invest based on the results of that study. Um, it directs the Planning Commission to update the town plan and update zoning to reduce obstacles for housing, especially in designated growth areas, which we're going to do anyway, but it's a it's formalizing the instruction tied to a goal. Um, the Affordable Housing Committee and the Community Development Corp would partner with developers and nonprofits and residents. Um, so basically to clarify, all these goals are not saying the town is going to build all these houses. The basically what we're saying is that the town is going to make investments, make decisions, make policy choices that will enable us to meet these goals, that will enable developers and residents to meet these goals. Um, and finally, to review the progress annually and adjust as needed. Uh, one of the kind of hesitations was, you probably read, there's a lot in the state legislature now about a housing bill that will probably come through in May and would that override this or supplement it? It seems like from everything that it looks like is that this would be compatible. And if in fact, we'd be a leader and we would be a role model for other towns to follow a similar process of establishing goals and targets. So that if we are able to adopt this, we would share our experience with the Regional Planning Commission so to see how it could work for other towns. Um, so that's a little, it's it's not exactly prescriptive because it wouldn't be appropriate for a resolution to be prescriptive too much. Because remember that it's happy birthday, this is how we feel, this is important. But it sets up the justification for harder decisions to come down the road about investing in infrastructure and about the town plan and about zoning amendments. Um, and I think that's the last slide. Or no, the next step. So based on um, this discussion, think about it and um, we'll distribute a draft for everyone. And if you have comments on the draft, if you could provide that input to Linda who can assemble it and then we can see where we are and how close we are to having something that we could actually like review and approve. And if we review and approve it, the Affordable Housing Committee reviews and approves it, then we would go together arm in arm to the select board and say, you know, we're your advisory group and we're advising you and we think you should do this and here's why. And we probably lead them through something similar to what we did tonight and um, encourage them to adopt it. Regardless, the content and the numbers, I anticipate we could incorporate into the town plan.
Mm hmm.
Um, regardless of what the select board decides to, I think it'll be a smoother political process, so to speak, if they could adopt the resolution and then it folds into the town plan. But that would be sort of like Plan B if they didn't adopt it. So that's, that's the basic outline. Comments, questions?
I have I have two quick comments. Oh, three. First comment, I love it. Nice work, everybody. Um, and thank you. Second comment, I uh, I don't want this to be a negative. In my personal view, it's not nearly aggressive enough. I think engineering it based on the grand list is mathematically illogical inside my brain. And by doing that, we're just going to get more of what we have and the grand list is so far out of date. And that's not meant to be a mean criticism because I know you have to start somewhere, but that's my personal view is it's not, it's not nearly um, aggressive enough. And then my third comment is the sooner we do this, the further we are ahead of that housing bill, which is going to put a lot of demand on the Building Homes Together Campaign and and EverNorth is not just a Chittenden County thing and the other organizations are not just Chittenden County. And this is a nationwide problem, like you said, of how you how you got down to the granular data. So the sooner we can adopt this as a town, the sooner we can tap into some of those resources before everyone else does. And it's going to be really tough to get those wheels moving, to get partnerships in place and resources lined up and the development process, the whole point of that um, that housing resolution in the state legislature was to fast track things and to remove some of the barriers in development, including act of fifty barriers in specific municipalities. So again, the the faster we can do this, the more ahead of it we can get, the more we can get our resources lined up around these goals, the better. Because we'll be competing with literally everyone for the same resources. So again, I want to go back to my first comment. I love you. Thank you. I don't want to complain about something that is in itself huge progress.
Yeah, it's an incredible amount of work.
Yep.
I had a, I have a kind of a bigger comment and I I'm not quite sure how this is going to come out. So I'm just going to start talking. Hope it makes sense. But I am so on board. And this, I guess it goes back to Susan, when you were talking about what is one of the purpose of a resolution is about clarity around goals. And so I am so on board about setting targets for affordable and missing middle. I'm less on board about setting targets for high because the market is going to take care of that. And it feels like it waters down um, the goal of of having Um, the goal of, of having a more diverse housing stock in Jericho. If we. Have that goal of fifty percent more houses in the high income. So I'm, I'm just feeling a little angst about that, because for. From what I've heard in conversations and meetings, and from folks in the town, and from uh, an equity lens. Is that what we really need is um, affordable and missing mid- middle, so why not just focus on that?
So I don't think we have a, um, we don't have a high goal. Um. And so I think that's good feedback in terms of. Um, and definitely think about that as you're looking at the draft of the resolution. Um, we talked a lot about, about this, um, and. We talk, we, we also spent a lot of time on, should we really just be focusing on, on the affordable and the low income goal? Um, from, in thinking about an equity lens, is that, is that the, is that the better place to be spending um? A lot of our energy and, and resources, um, I think that. Uh, the. The building that's already happening um, is big. And that will continue to happen, and there's nothing in this resolution that. Um, we haven't touched trying to stop that curve that restricts that in any way. Um, providing those numbers to give you a sense of what is already happening market wise. That if we put, um, if we put uh, incentives and um. M- moderate zoning and, and may, and put all these things in place. Can we shift some of the high income building that's already gonna be happening, can we shift that down? Can we make that P U D, a mixed income P U D instead of just um, nine, you know, McMansions? Um, and then on top of, on top of whatever that, that uh. That building that's already gonna happen is, let's add on top of it, these things. Um, the other thing that I just wanna quickly say too is, um. I totally see, um, maybe not a press release, Susan, this is a conversation we had like over a year ago, probably. Maybe not a press release, but a mailing to a bunch of different developers um, in the community as soon as this resolution gets passed. Um, that says, this is what, th- these are Jericho's priorities. I know that you, that maybe we haven't been great to play with, or you haven't done this, considered Jericho for this kind of building in the past. But we want this to happen, um, and send that mailing out, like you're saying, Sarah, I think that getting ahead of the. Getting ahead of the, the stuff that's coming down from Montpelier in the next few months is gonna be really critical. Um, and you know, at one point, there was a question of, well, if. If the C C R P C and, and Montpelier are gonna be having towns set targets and whatnot anyway. Maybe, maybe this conversation is really moot, and we should just wait and see, see what our marching orders are from the county and from the state. And exactly for the reasons that you stated, Sarah, um. I, I think that it's worth, it's worth moving forward. Um, and I love to hear the feedback that it's not aggressive enough, I hope that you're not the only one sitting there who feels that way.
Sabina.
I just had a timing question, um, about, so your, your target. Um, years for this resolution are now to twenty twenty-eight, is that right? And so.
End of twenty twenty-eight, yeah.
Okay, so how, how does the um. The whole infrastructure piece fit into that timeline? I mean, is it, i- it, is that even, is it possible? I mean, let's just say, in the very best scenario, um. Could, could those two things align in the way that we need them to, or do we have to do the stuff that we wanna do in the resolution? Um, without. Knowing that the infrastructure will come, but doing this without that being in place, I, I'm just curious about how they align.
Yeah, we wrestled with that a little bit too, at one point, we were considering a ten-year timeframe. Um, to allow for the infrastructure piece, um, and there were a lot of reasons why we felt that that um. That ten years um. Didn't make sa- you lose, you lose the momentum, you use the bite, you use kind of the um, energy behind it. Um, and that, you know, the nice thing about this is that you can constantly um, be up. Um, and so I think that getting, that i- it's a mistake to wait for infrastructure. Um, I think that we've been waiting for infrastructure for decades. Um, and so I think that we need to have these targets now, I think that these targets being. Um, maybe more modest than, than some members of the committee were um, arguing for. Is a result of the lack of infrastructure and wondering if once we get the infrastructure there, if uh. Depending on that timeframe, we're around that four or five year mark, and we're all sitting in the same room, having the same conversation and saying, okay. The next five years, we're boosting those numbers, baby, or not, um. But it, it was something that, that we were, that we were thinking about, uh, but also something that we didn't wanna um. We didn't wanna wait for.
Does it lessen our chances of having the growth occur in the areas that we wanted in? If.
It could.
Eric.
Thank you, uh, so, two things I did wanna bring up, just as, as they covered, S J covered most of them, just to um. Go in some more detail on it, the, the ten year also, that fits in with where we are on the building homes together. Cuz that current plan runs out in three years. So we didn't wanna go past. The countywide plan that we have with something that they may change completely in the next three years. So we're trying to be reasonable on that, again, as, as S J said, five years is a good number. It's within most people's normal. Planning process timeline, as realistic, ten years is, I can wait till next year to get started on it. Um, the other piece, and, and this gets really to um. The earlier question about why thirty percent? When we looked at what's being built right now. Uh, the high end is gonna get built no matter what. That's what the market is demanding, so. By putting in a thirty percent piece, we're reminding builders. That there is a target that they should try to push for that additional component. So it's not instead of, it's in addition to. That gives us the benefit of creating more housing overall, which. Potentially creates the opportunity for people who might be thinking about moving out of the family home into a smaller home. To have a place to go to, that's not necessarily an affordable housing, cuz they're able to afford something bigger. And by creating a larger pool of housing, increasing the supply with a consistent demand. By economic rules, that kind of forces prices down, so it wasn't just. Let's pick it out of the air, it's, it's what makes sense for where we are, and. As a member of both planning commission and the Affordable Housing, Housing Committee, I feel very comfortable with where we settled ourselves on. In terms of numbers and percentages. And that's my piece.
Sure, fighting, yeah, um, two things, one, I, it's brilliant, love where you're going. And since we haven't seen the actual resolution, it's hard to know how much of the, the. The sharing of information that S J did is actually in the data points. So if it's, you know, you were saying it's like data, the first part is, whereas, therefore, I think S G had really sharp points of the. Whereas, that I wanna, I hope are part of the narrative in the, in the resolution. So specifically, whereas we know. The market will take care of itself on that high end, therefore, we are calling for more investment in the middle and lower. Income, like just making that really sharp and clear and jump, which I think is what I'm hearing. You know it, and I, and it may be there already, but I just wanted to make sure that. That's one of the data points that leads to the therefore's. Um, and then I might have missed it, and then, and or there might be a reason not to include it, but is there anything in the. Whereas, therefore, actions that's around connecting this to the work of the community development. Work and the fundraising that needs to happen, like, the, I, I, it clearly stuck in my brain about setting the stage for policy. Um, and somewhat on investments, but not investment versus fundraising. Like, in my mind, there's a little bit difference of something there.
Yeah, it's, um, it's mentioned, it's, it's like a few words. It just says the Affordable Housing Committee and the Community Development Corp would partner to identify. Projects, parcels, partners, and funding sources, that's pretty much all it says, but. So funding is there, but also the whole thing is literally only two pages.
Right, and just thinking that it's part of it is the. In terms of being proactive, like the two ways of, you know, being proactive is changing the. The policy landscape, for sure, right, setting targets. And for the, but for the housing itself, but there's a piece that then feels a little passive and still relying on. If we do this, then those builders will do X, Y, and Z. And I'm wondering if there's a little bit more active role that we can give ourselves as town or town members.
Does that, does that resolution mention the part that was in our, our recommendation of having a point person specifically called out?
No, because I think, I think it's important to. I was, said this to S J, it's kind of like deciding what to order for dessert before everybody has agreed to go out to dinner. And the resolution is basically saying, we're all gonna go out to dinner. And if we all agree that these are our goals, then we have a kind of work to do to figure out how are we gonna meet these goals? Then it's like, okay, I gotta get thirty, you gotta get twenty, and we can't just, we, we don't know enough yet. We don't have the commitment yet, we don't have the directive yet to. Roll all those things together, not that I'm shying away from making it action oriented. But the town plan will be action oriented, and you know, all of the other work that everybody's doing will be action oriented. I think what you said about changing the policy landscape is sort of the reason for doing it, because right now, it sort of seems like Jericho kind of like. Reacts along, and something pops, it's like whack-a-mole, you know, something pops up, and there's a noisy person, and then. We do that, and we fix that, and then something else happens, and this is support is sort of saying like. Stop the presses, what the hell are we trying to do? This is what we're trying to do, we wrote it down, we said it out loud. Therefore, then we all need to go and figure out, so I, I think that's what S J was talking about, the infrastructure. Because this is a little bit where I'm pushing back a little bit on the input from the Affordable Housing Committee to say. Don't, not pollute it, don't water it down with too much act- action. Because that will, that'll kill it, cuz everyone will disagree.
Agreed, I, so I wonder if I could offer, and I will look at the, I will tell the, look at it, and it might just already be there, it's just thinking about. There may be just a phrase that says, here's, here's what we know, will take care of itself. And here's why we are making additional commitment, because we want it to be bigger, and we will use the full toolbox. We are encouraging the town to use the full toolbox, which is policy, program, and budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and just sort of be super explicit that those are the three things that we have in our tool.
Yes, I think that can be strengthened, for sure.
Right, and then not say how you get your budget, or, but just being really clear that we have these three different levers we can use. And we collectively believe we should be using all of them. So it's not either or, it's a yes and, all of them strategically, because housing is such a priority for our community.
Right.
So that, 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 that's what I look for.
Okay.
Eric.
To, um, to that point, it's worth noting that the Affordable Housing Committee. Is proposing to the Planning Commission some recommendations for action. It is well within our purview as the commission to adjust that accordingly. And so we don't need to throw all of this on the committee.
Mm-hmm, yes, oh yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so we're basically over time on this discussion, but Chuck, you, I know this is why you came. And you asked earlier about public comment time, so I wanna make sure we have time to listen.
Um, I think what, you know, what's important here is that a, you know, that a goal is being established. I mean, we've spent fifty years thinking that opposing housing is, you know, kind of God's work, and we're saying now. That we're no longer opposing housing. I think the thirty, I mean, the, the, you know, was proposed is kind of, you know, it's kind of a keeping up the jo- keeping up with the Joneses kind of goal. You know, we're saying, we're gonna do our share of the county's goal, based on a percentage of population that we have suppressed. For kind of all these years. Um, I think having a goal is great, you know, and then, you know, goals can be adjusted, but we're kind of bouncing between keeping up with the Joneses. Or doing something where you've described it being a model, this is not being a model. This is a keeping up with the Joneses number, and do we feel like we have an obligation to do better than that? Basically, when we're replicating the economic profile, just with kind of more houses. In the twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, Jericho Elementary School. Had the lowest percentage of children eligible for free and produced lunch of any public school in Vermont. By a wide margin. And the original plan, basically the form of the current plan, back in nineteen seventy, they were really clear. Is this about increasing property values, we have really succeeded brilliantly. And I think, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, we're sort of bouncing back and forth and developing the courage. About being a little more out loud, and, and then I hope, I just feel like the, the signals are out there that. This is a moment in time that, um, you know, or I think that a little more courage should be welcomed. This is the process of the comfortable, deciding how many uncomfortable people. Need to be comfortable before we're comfortable, you know, and that's sort of where we, it's like, we're like, you know, Eric's comfortable, that's great. But we should, I think, be coming up with a goal that kind of makes it a little uncomfortable, you know, like.
Chuck, I, I agree with you, like you said, we are literally one of the top three richest towns in terms of per capita income. If there's anybody who is gonna put out a bold target, it should be us.
And, and we're literally saying, we're gonna keep up with the rest of the county.
Anyone who has the resources, it should be us.
Ri- right, and I, I also think that somehow we need to call out this broad about. Infrastructure, where we've been saying for fifty years, we're gonna reserve most of the town for the people with money who can buy ten acres. And we're gonna build infrastructure for the little people in the village, and we're now, you know, S J said, well, what happens in five years when nothing's happened? Well, that's already happened, okay, it's already happened, it's already happened, it's already happened, I don't believe it. I literally don't believe it, so the idea of kind of holding back on, we basically need to do what's necessary. Right now, and then certainly the next five years, there will be no infrastructure, so we need to figure out how to make it happen, you know, um. O- over the next five years, and I think one of the whereas's need to be, that. The idea of concentrated, of, of village centers is, we're gonna abolish that in the town plan, we don't have infrastructure, you know. At, at some point, you have to say. We're, we're calling, we're calling the town out, we're calling ourselves out. I mean, people in the ten acre zone are enjoying enormous increases in wealth. Due to the scarcity of housing, you know, kind of that we've created, it's time for them to kind of pony up. In terms of, you know, uh, the, 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 the infrastructure. I think that's about covered.
Okay. Great, thank you, everybody, thank you, S J, thank you, Eric, thank you, Affordable Housing Committee, lots of good work. Onward. Okay. Um, so, then we're moving on to Linda, number eight, as our. Update on the wastewater feasibility study, so it's kind of good timing, really, the perfect segue, yes.
All right, I did throw a few slides together that, um, I don't know if Sabina's still there to share, or if I should share. Sabina was gonna share them.
I'm here, I'm working on getting it up, I, I lost my internet connection for a second, so just give me a second. I think I should be able to get it back up.
All right.
Okay.
That would have been very exciting.
Yeah.
Oh, it should be coming up, um, it says it's loading. Can you see it now?
See it.
So.
Thank you.
This is still going to be a pretty high level update, like I would say, I'm probably going from like, you know. Prior to this, we maybe have like a ten thousand foot view, this will be like a five thousand foot view, but with some more specific. Timeframes as much as I know right now. Um, on the dates and like how the rest of this feasibility study is going to play out. So I won't know all the nitty gritty details, if you have very specific questions about content of the study and stuff, I don't know if I can speak to that. But I should be able to speak to at least like what the process is looking like and what the consultant is doing as far as the scope of work and stuff. And some in some timeline, timeframes in here. Um, all right, we can go to the next slide. Sabina.
Oh, I did, I did go to the next slide, did it not change for you guys?
It just did, I think it was sticky there for a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just go right to here, okay, no, you can go to the next one, this is just, we all know what the purpose is. Can you go to the next slide?
I did, maybe you should do it, because I think my internet isn't cooperating. Right now, I see the slides, it says task description.
There it is, okay, okay. Uh, so these tasks kind of outline like where we started and where we're at currently. So, you know, the first one was late last year, the kickoff meeting, which was just kind of a, you know, sit down with DuBois and King, who was selected as the engineer. This happened before I was even on board, I think Susan was involved in in that meeting um, back in the fall of twenty twenty two. Just kind of talking about uh, the different areas that the study is going to be looking at, which are the three village centers. Um, how communication is going to flow and what information that the engineer would need from us. Um, so that part's done, and then the next step was the study area survey, and so this was um. A survey that was mailed to homeowners that lived in the three village areas that were delineated. Um, for the study, and I did that mailing right when I started, it was probably in January, it was about six hundred. Plus or minus letters going out to all the property owners in the three village centers. And the survey was asking questions about their existing septic systems and what condition they were in, how old they were. Um, and so those were due back, I think in February. Uh, but we did then extend the response deadline into March, because we had DuBois and King. Um, come to have a table at town meeting, and we wanted to use that as an opportunity. To engage more people and answer questions that they might have had about the survey, and then just give a little more time to kind of. Collect as many responses as we could. So that part's complete, um, and then as we're looking at all that data. The engineers were reviewing the data and doing an analysis of the homeowner responses, and they generated some G I S maps. That um, Sabina and I have been working on getting on the website. Um, so is that website live, Sabina, or is it still in draft form?
Um, it is still in draft form, okay. Cause I thought we were going to add more things before we published it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, there's not a lot there yet, but we're working on it, but we do have the maps. Um, that kind of show the existing conditions, and so the next step after that is the needs assessment, and so that's. What's currently going on, um, and when that is complete, we'll get what's called a thirty percent report, which will be a written report. Um, that will kind of look at all of the information collected to date. Um, and give us like a summary of everything that they've learned. And so I just had an email today asking them when that report would be delivered, and they said by the end of next week, so that's great. Um, so that's where we're at currently, that's where we started and where we're at right now, and then if you go to the next slide. I've outlined, you know, sort of like what's next.
All right, I switched slides, can you see that?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the next step after the thirty percent report is that there'll be concept plans developed. And there'll be two to three alternatives that are going to be considered for each village center. Um, in that timeframe, oh, I should have updated that T V D, that is going to be uh, April to May. That they'll be working on that, and then the deliver will be will be some sort of uh, G I S mapping of. Alternatives and locations where they could potentially be cited. Um, after that will be the alternatives analysis, so that's where they look at each of the alternatives. And kind of analyze, you know, whether or not each one would meet the goal, you know, be able to support the goal, the needs that are identified. In terms of capacity, you know, also take into consideration how. Complex each one is in terms of like operation and maintenance, so you know, there's a difference in complexity between like a small scale. Community septic versus a full on like sewage treatment plant. And I don't know what options we're going to be given, but um, so they'll have to do an analysis, kind of looking at whether each alternative meets the needs. How complex it is, and that will be in what's called the sixty percent report, which we should be getting June sixteenth. And then with those alternatives analysis, there'll also be some cost opinions, which are going to be at a very conceptual level, you know, they're. A little bit better than a guess, but you know, it'd still be sort of a very, very rough. Uh, opinion of what each of these alternatives might cost. Um, so we'll get that information as well in the sixty percent report. And then uh, the last step will be the final report, which will kind of collect and assimilate everything throughout the whole. Um, study, and that will be delivered to us in August, and so this is um. A later, you know, the anticipated original goal was like this study would be done. Probably in the next month or so, but we got kind of backed up, I guess, when Catherine left and then it didn't get kicked off, I think initially when it. When we thought it was, so we're a little bit behind the initial schedule, but I'm going to be. Very firm with DuBois and King, trying to keep them to this new schedule that they just gave me today. Cause we need, we need this information for the town plan and for all the next steps that we were just talking about with the housing stuff. So that's the feasibility study, and that's the timeframe for that, and then if you go to the next slide.
Well, she's switching, can I? And an alternatives analysis, I didn't understand the difference between those two stages.
So the cons, they're, it's part of the same stage, they're just two different elements, so a concept plan um, may have some. Graphic elements, it might be a drawing or maybe a map, and then the alternative analysis is really a a written, a narrative like. Comparing um.
It's pros and cons.
Yeah, exactly, or like here, here's like what's pros of this type of system versus this type, and here's. You know, the challenges with this type.
Great, thank you.
Um, and so I want to just throw in here some of the public engagement stuff that's in the scope. Um, the first thing that we had DuBois and King do was a table at town meeting. And that was to publicize the project and work on generating more responses to the surveys. Um, then the town website, um, a specific page for the wastewater feasibility study. That Sabina and I have been working on, and as one of the tasks, DuBois and King is going to be generating content. And materials along the way, so um, that'll be helpful, because Sabina and I sort of like end packing away and trying to be like, all right, how should we? Put this up and we need a little more information about this, um. One of the things that we expect to get from DuBois and King with the thirty percent report at the end of next week is some additional content for the website. So that'll be great, I think will really help kind of beef up um, the info that we have there. Um, I also had, I reached out to the town planner in Westford, and I had a meeting with her yesterday. Because they are, they have also been going through the process of. Um, getting a wastewater system in their village, and they have a fantastic website, I don't know if any of you have.
Yes.
Have visited it.
Yes, a lot.
They have some great content on there, when I was, when I met with her yesterday, I asked her if she would be open to me. Uh, sort of stealing some of her context, I was like, you have such great, they have frequently asked questions, and they have a lot of. Just really in depth, like why are we doing this, what's the need, why do we need to do this? Um, so she said I could borrow and use the content from there, so that was great. Um, and then another public engagement thing we'll do is having a public informational meeting. And that will be sort of at the end of the process, when we get the, when we have something to present, when we have some conceptual plans, and we have some alternatives to consider. So that will probably be August, September timeframes where um, DuBois and King will do a public information meeting. And, you know, share everything that they've learned. Okay, next slide. Okay, so then what, right, like, so we did this study, then what? And this again, this is a very, very high level of my understanding of the next steps of the process, um. But once the alternatives are considered, there will be a recommendation or recommendations from the engineer for. You know, what what they think the town should do to proceed, and if. The select board chooses to move any of those recommendations, move forward with any of those recommendations. The next step would be to do preliminary engineering, and so that's really. When you get into the phase of actually designing something like, designing a very specific treatment. Facility for a very specific location and doing the actual engineering. Um, and that will require state and federal permitting, which is a little, it's a process, as you can imagine. And then after the permitting and the preliminary engineering, we get to the final engineering. Um, and then you get to voter voter hearings and bond vote, which would be sort of like the last step. And one thing I didn't put in here that I should have is uh, getting grant money.
That's what I was gonna say, it's your funding.
I didn't put that in here, but I should have, so that can be happening, I think we'd need to have at least. We need to be at least in the preliminary engineering phase to be able to go after money and be competitive for it. Because there are other communities in Vermont that are going through the same process and. You need to kind of know, already know what you're going to build before entities are going to be willing to award money for it.
And how does the study, the preliminary engineering study, how is that paid for, is that just within the town budget? Like through capital plan, and it's not capital.
It it could be paid for in a number of ways, the current. I'll call it a pipeline that we're in is through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and so the town has gotten. Funding for this feasibility study through that Clean Water State Revolving Fund. Um, and so there's uh, we're in, it's called step one, and then step two would be the preliminary engineering. So it's, it's a revolving loan fund where some portion of the funding is forgivable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so my current understanding is that the feasibility study is a forgivable loan. But when you get into preliminary engineering, it would be something that would ultimately get rolled into a construction loan. When you get to the time you're going to construct.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
If you are going to use this presentation, which I think is fabulous, first, let me just say, love.
Oh, thank you.
And I would put it on on the website, seriously, as you think about like how you're walking people through understanding something. What you've done is beautiful, and I think this can be really helpful on the website that you're building, and. And you mentioned two things that are not on the slide that I think are really important, and one is put in.
Yeah.
But it's like the 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 piece on the planning commission, excuse me, the um, select board. And then the fundraising, is in a sense, it's like, then what? In order to get there, the piece that there has to be. A a a public decision, and then there has to be some fundraising, and that would round it out, because it also then helps us. As select board members and members of the public to recognize like, there are places where input will be most useful.
Yep.
And and sort of connecting that in with the times we have the public input in a separate place. But just again, just thinking about like, how do we use our collective? And where we sit to be useful, and where we sit and can be useful should be representable.
Yeah, so about like, one one, the next thing we're going to talk about is the town plan, it kind of lines up very well with like. The second draft of the town plan and that public meeting in that like August, September timeframe.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Cause I think showing how the pieces come together, and it's always, you know, in the world that I live in, it's like, who gets to make what decision when?
Mm-hmm.
And this feels very, like, I don't know how to, I don't know how to do anything about, once you told me I'm in preliminary engineering. But if you told me like the select board is going to have to improve something, then I feel like, oh, now I understand. But this is not just a technical process, but it also has a public process that's.
Yeah.
Super important.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Chuck.
Uh, building on what you said, I think in addition to fundraising, I think it's also partnerships with potential. Uh, builders in projects, so I think um. For example, like on Plains Road, if we were able to on those lots, if we put in thirty units right there, then that. Builders could maybe pay for a third of whatever, you know, of whatever gets built for uh. Um, Jericho Center. Uh, I think also it would be really helpful, I think, along the way, if we could have, if we can educate ourselves in the Affordable Housing Committee about. Systems like not in the village centers, our our densest. Some of our densest population centers are not in the village centers, and I think that growth in that kind of category is likely to continue. Sarah pointed out, you know, I've been, I've been talking about Lafayette Drive and Oxide, and about twenty-five houses on ten acres, Sarah's saying, well, that's not, you know. You you need another ten acres for, you know, for septic, so as we're kind of conceiving that idea, and there's a lot of these around Jericho. Ten acre little things on five or six acres, um, and I think that's uh, it would be good if we could educate ourselves about. Systems. For those kinds of uh, of dense developments, because the. The densest new developments are not going to happen in village centers, they're going to happen other places.
Yeah.
Did anybody on video have comments, because we can't see them.
Oh, yeah, right.
No, I don't have any comments right now, other than the usual one, which is. Yes, this is a long process, yes, it's going to take six, eight, twelve months until we get to a point of voting. This would be the time for us to start reaching out, putting it up on our front porch forum post, saying, by the way, did you know? And it's going to cost money and build a co- you know, a a consensus or a support group in the town. So when we do go to bonding, it's not a, where the heck did this come from, but it's, oh yeah, we've heard about it, we're behind it.
Yeah, yeah, and that was one of the main pieces of feedback that the Westford planner did give me was that. Cause I said, what what have you learned and what would you have done differently? What can you teach me and us as we are at the beginning of this process, and she did say that. Outreach, 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 um, that she was like, I wish.
Want to keep your exclusive neighbor to get behind us.
Had done more uh, communicating uh, with the public, because they did sort of get to that point where like. They didn't, they have not done their bond vote yet, it's going to be in the summer or early fall, but um, they did start having a lot of. Negative stuff coming out on front porch forum in the past few months.
Not at the eleventh hour, really.
Yeah, well, you know what?
Three years.
She told me she's been working on it for sixteen years.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, and I was like, oh my gosh, I don't want to.
There is, just, I mean, if you look at NIMBYism or Naism, it always is, like, people don't pay attention.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially if we try, people don't pay attention until it's like, oh, this is actually happening now.
Yeah.
And now I'm not, and now.
And I'm going to be directly attracted.
Right, and so they, I mean, that's just part of a normal cycle in some ways, and so, but knowing that. How to build in around it. how to build in around it, that there are going to be, there's going to be a certain percentage of our community. But it's just, no matter what we do, is not going to be happy about it. It's gonna be change that they're not interested in and we just need to acknowledge that. So sort of like the missing middle, you know, sort of like, okay, if we accept that there's a missing middle politically, right? That there's a certain percent of the population that's not ever gonna be on board and a certain percent of the population that's automatically gonna be on board. Where's that middle and how do we reach them with information so that they care enough that there's enough of a backing so that when the people who really are never gonna be in support are not in support, there's enough folks who are activated, who wouldn't be the automatically activated, who are on board with us to make it happen.
Has Jericho ever had a bond vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
They did a bond for this building.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And they're very excited because they're about to pay it off.
Okay.
But when we went to our capital planning training, they said you really wanna keep filling up that debt capacity.
Yes.
So actually, it's in the queue. Don't worry.
So not, right.
Capital budget's coming back, but instead of, it's like when you, you know.
People are used to paying it. If you're used to having a car payment, then when your car payment is done, take your car and trade it in and keep your car payment and just keep on going because you're used to having that monthly expense.
Right.
If we don't keep something in the pipeline, then people get used to paying less.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And then they're like, what happened? And you're like, well, but for the fifteen years before that, you paid more and it wasn't a problem. Oh, but now I had one year of paying less.
And the problem is our, in Jericho, the debt payment as part of the budget has gone down every year. And um, yeah, so I'm hoping that that is coming back to the forefront.
Yeah.
Beginning of summer to figure out like, how do we influence that capital planning process to ratchet up the acceptance of some debt going forward? Cause otherwise, you know, you're not investing, you're not making any investment.
Mm-hmm.
And if the income is what it is and the grand less growth is what it is, it really should, you can probably afford that more than we think. Yeah.
Yes to that. We can afford much more than we think. And also um there are so many people who live on those ten acre parcels that technically wouldn't be affected by the installation of a wastewater system or other infrastructure. But they live here because they wanna be on a ten acre parcel with their single family home as part of a larger community that has all the services that they want centralized
Right.
in a small area and has all the other people living in the community. And they wanna have a place where they can bring their kids to trick or treat. Right? Like really, that's a real thing. Like you know, you get, you have fifty houses in your neighborhood and you get two hundred kids trick or treating at your door.
Yeah.
So they want that. And unlike Essex Town, Essex Junction, we can't just get a divorce. We can't divorce the ten acre people from the townies. It's not, that's really essentially what that whole argument was.
Mm-hmm.
Is like, we don't wanna pay for your infrastructure. We live out here, we're rural, we're Essex Town, we're rural. We don't wanna pay for your infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
You could, you live over there, be dense, have public systems. We, we're good over here. We don't need you. And they um, we can't do that here. We're not two municipalities. We cannot get a divorce. We gotta work it out.
Mm-hmm.
Gotta stay together for the kids. Yeah, it's very interesting to me, the psychology behind it. And I agree, socialization is the biggest part. It's like getting people ready for that.
Yes.
Telling them it's, it's happening.
Yes.
Telling them, look out for it and going over the math. Someone had presented once um.
Promised fifty years ago. I mean, you got a ten acre lot based on this promise.
Yes, exactly. But also um, I think people are scared of what they don't know. So there are gonna be big changes based on reassessment. And that's all under discussion because we can't feasibly manage what the state mandate says we have to do. There are not.
Well, it's not just a, it's not just a, here's what you are, don't have to worry about it. It's here's what you're getting in return for this. You're gonna get increased housing values because we have a more attractive area. You're gonna get more services because we have the cast capabilities for it. You're gonna get more programs at your school because we'll have more students for it. It's not just, you're bringing in a bunch of other people. This comes with it.
Right. And, and, but I mean, the math is like, for twenty dollars more per year, this is what's in it for you. Because when people see a giant number bond vote, they don't break it and amortize it over ten years or whatever the term is of that loan. They just see X million dollars and they freak out.
Hmm. I am just like so envisioning a like, who has like connections with Champlain College or something like that? Like I could so see that while we're doing all these technical studies, we should also be doing some kind of communications and marketing study, right? Because I agree with everything you're saying, but I'm not your demographic that needs to be convinced.
Right.
That we should be investing in this. And I feel like it would be super helpful. We don't invest and study public perception other than our own surveys, but those don't, those public perceptions don't necessarily translate into what engagement and messaging and all of that is gonna resonate with our public. And so just a-again, it's like, there's the technical nut to solve, which the wastewater feasibility study is absolutely gonna do. It is not going to solve our
Our PR problem.
Our, yeah, and it's just, and it's, it's, you know, I'm part of the P, you know.
Yeah.
Our problem of who we are and what we value and what we care about and what does it mean in terms of new decisions we need to make? And there's a whole science and body around that, that we are we are trying our best to do without the professionals.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so I'm just wondering, is there a way for us, cause, cause the town, of course, doesn't have a budget for this and the town doesn't have professionals, as it were. Like we hire technical people, which is essential. And is there a way to?
Well, theoretically, David White partnered with Steve Whitman to bring at least to the town plan process, some of that expertise.
But that's the difference between public engagement and communications and
Marketing.
Marketing, yeah.
Right.
They are really separate, like, but like I'm humbled by how I, though I know in that zone, I know enough to know that I don't know anything.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
And so I know more about the engagement, like how do you hear from people, but not then, how do you translate what you've heard into something that people will embrace? That's all.
Revised messaging.
You know, there's a whole, there's a whole body of work around that. And I just feel like that's our piece that like, we, we're so lined up well with the public engagement and with the technical studies, but that's the piece that I feel like if we can figure out how to supplement and complement what we're already doing, that's what will tee us up best for sort of like really designing and creating a town plan or a housing objective and a wastewater or something that then moves forward. Like we need all three pieces.
Yeah, I just want to think about that a little bit more, like, once we know how revolutionary the content of the town plan is gonna be.
Absolutely.
You know, and we see, then we'll really need to strategize about how to really message it, inform people, gain buy-in, be persuasive, be clear, be transparent, all those other things.
And to have to make sure it resonates with what people care about.
Right.
What they wanna invest.
Right. I think we should think about that when, when we think about the community forum.
Yeah, yeah. So there's just a piece where I just, like, if I think about who, who we are around the table and what resources and expertise we have collectively.
Mm-hmm.
We don't really have that piece, right?
Yeah.
And so I don't know how we get it. I'm just, I'm just.
It's the select board's bond.
Yeah.
It's their responsibility. You are staffing the select board and you would be assisting the select board and getting we would be assisting the select board on the messaging.
Yeah, and, but I think we.
We, we can't be working around, I agree with everything you're saying, except that you're leaving out the select board. It's like, they.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And, and, and we also know that we have a job to inform and influence
Yeah.
there too.
Yes.
Um, yeah. It's nine o'clock.
Yeah.
I have to excuse myself.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's, that's.
Sure.
Time better away from you.
Um, okay, so the last thing that I think we were cut, we're going to look at was just the town plan and work plan. Maybe we should just do that and table the other items before we adjourn. If you, we could go five more minutes.
Yeah, and I apologize for
Yeah.
not tracking.
Um. Okay, so this is just a summary of various dates um related to the town plan. So PC, we have lots of other things to do and lots of other, Linda and I were like playing Tetris with the agenda the other day, trying to figure out how to fit everything in and not go over time and and be ambitious. Um, but allow enough time for discussion and it's really, it's really tricky. So April eighteenth was originally designed as a PC work session with David on the local economy. But we are not confident that we can um that we, well, we know that like half of us aren't gonna be at that meeting. And so I think we have a quorum for the meeting, but it seems like it wouldn't be good form to have a town plan work session and have several of us absent. Um, so we're suggesting that we change the agenda for the eighteenth and that we reschedule that work session from April eighteenth instead to June twentieth. So it pushes us back about two weeks on our schedule. And instead, on the eighteenth, we would prep for the community forum, which this conversation that we just had would be really helpful to bring forward to that. Maybe Linda, you could make sure that David, you could bring him up to speed on this conversation so that he arrives on April eighteenth, like really thinking about messaging and how he wants to structure that forum. Um, so I wanna hear from David exactly what he's gonna do on May third and how he wants the PC to participate. And we also wanna talk about how we're gonna promote, actually, this isn't even on the list, how we're gonna get people there. So one of the things I thought was like, let's do an article in the Mountain Gazette. And of course, we'll do front porch forum and maybe we can reach out on to all of our liaisons and so forth. So then May third is the community forum. The sixteenth, I anticipate we should have a good discussion. What did we hear? What did we learn? What surprised us? What was like a no-brainer? And also, thinking about public, start thinking about summer engagement because it's already May. We can't wait till the middle of June to decide how we're gonna use the summer. June sixth would be the work session on community facilities and infrastructure. June twentieth would be the local economy. And then we would really like brass tacks. Okay, these are the three things we're gonna do this summer. Here's how we're gonna get it done. Here's who's gonna do what. And then David says, you know, June, he would have his first draft published, but since we're pushing the schedule back two weeks, I'm thinking it might be more like early July. But I wanna have a date up now to give to David for sure that July eighteenth, the PC would be really reviewing the draft in detail. What did we like? What didn't we like? What needs to change? What are we missing? You know, a real public a meeting conversation about the draft and that we would also look at all the public input. Take a step back and say, here's what we heard about housing. Here's what we heard about economy. What are common themes? What are the main takeaways? Um, then, then it kind of breaks down, I'm not really sure what the work will look like, but we do know if you scroll up, I don't know who's doing it, Linda or Sabina.
Yep.
That we backed it up based on the due date, that we have to have the select board's final hearing by December X, December twenty-first.
Mm-hmm.
Which means because you have thirty days and thirty days and notice and this and that, we have to have our hearing first. We really have to strive to have our first public hearing September fifth.
Right.
So we have to kind of keep the pace going um in order to make those dates. And I don't know how we should be spending our time really from June through October to make sure that we get the public input that we reflected.
Is, is there, does the draft town plan have to be published in such a way, some, at a certain timeframe before the September fifth public hearing? For the public to read it?
Yes, like uh, but I don't think it has to be that far ahead.
Okay.
I think we have to notice it thirty days ahead, but I don't know when the materials have to be published by.
Okay.
Um, and then I'm assuming between our first public hearing and the final select board adoption, there would be revisions to the draft, like the wastewater study results would be fed into it and um other things would be fed into it. Okay? So does that seem like workable schedule? Eric and Sabina, does that seem like a workable schedule?
I think so.
I think the question wanted that. Sorry. Um, we wanted to confirm availability on June twentieth so that we could make sure we had a forum, hopefully more than a forum. Um, but checking to make sure that that rescheduled date will work for the majority of PC members.
That's a regular Tuesday.
It is, yeah.
It's a regular Tuesday.
Yep.
And it's, I think after school's over. Um, but not any, it's not a holiday.
Right.
Um, and then we're also in, assuming that we're not gonna have a meeting on July third. Fourth. Oh, July.
I think it was the fourth.
Yeah, you're right. It's July fourth, so that we wouldn't have a meeting on July fourth. Um, SJ is interested to have a table at the farmer's market, which we could potentially take advantage of this summer. Um, you know, there's the parade, there's the pet parade, you know, there's other stuff, other activities that are going on. So those are the ideas that we'll be looking for bringing on to the discussion on May sixteenth, like how else can we use the summer to raise awareness about the plan and to um inform people about what we're doing on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, and will David have some material for us to review the Friday before the meeting on the eighteenth? Like, but we'll, we'll go out with the agenda.
Which eighteenth?
April, I'm sorry. So that we're not just like getting that during the meeting, but we have a chance to read prior to the meeting.
For what he wants to do for the forum and for the outline. Um. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We'll ask him.
Yeah.
For that.
Yeah.
He has already started working on an outline.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Wendy, you took a look at that and had some comments on that. So I was hoping to bring that conversation into the broader PC meeting on the eighteenth as well.
Mm-hmm.
So that he's not like in a darkened room, just coming up with an outline and a draft that we see for the first time in June.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, yes, Linda.
Um, one thing that you and I had talked about was whether we needed to identify someone to chair the meeting on the eighteenth because you were gonna be in an airport.
Yes. We're gonna need somebody.
And Sarah.
Sarah will be there. So.
I am also away the eighteen, April eighteenth. I am, I'm one of the not availables.
Okay, so you, Susan, you're our number four for a forum at that meeting.
Right.
So it may have to be abbreviated because it sounded like you're getting on a plane.
Right, so I have an hour, hour and a half.
Okay. So we were hoping to have someone else on the PC act as chair so that Susan wouldn't have to be on a Zoom from an airport and running the meeting. And because Sarah is not available and she won't be at that meeting.
Okay. And I mean, I, I can do it, but if Eric or Sabina, you really wanted to do it.
I'm gonna be in Scottsdale, Arizona at a conference. I can't do it.
Eric's not there either.
Okay.
So Wendy, you'll do it?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Okay, so Wendy, you'll chair that meeting.
Great. And then the other thing that Susan and I were discussing was whether or not we would have a meeting on May second, cause that would be our next regular meeting after the April eighteenth one. But it is the day, the day before we have the community forum, so.
But we did kind of think like it might not be bad to get all our ducks in a row.
Yeah.
I think we should.
So if you're willing to give the PC two nights that week is, was sort of the question.
Yeah, that's the question.
Okay. So at least we have three. So Sabina or Eric, would you be willing to also attend on the second and the third?
Yeah, get them.
Yeah, I can do both.
Okay. All right, so we'll plan to do both. So that actually takes a little bit of pressure off the agenda stuff. Okay, so that's good.
So it'll be a short meeting. So it'll be a short meeting on the eighteenth.
And probably a shorter meeting on the second.
Second, yes. Okay.
And then did you wanna check in about the June twentieth?
Yes, uh, June twentieth, um. Who, and does, is, can anyone not make it that they know of right now?
My, I'll, I'll have to say that my um, work schedule is completely out of control for June and July. I mean, I don't know what it is yet, cause it won't get scheduled until May, getting the project I'm working on.
Okay.
And it's gonna include a lot of travel, so. I think you should say tentative, and even if I'm somewhere else, I I will try to participate, but I I. I'm just a little bit nervous about June and July.
Okay. Anyone else have conflict on June twentieth?
I think I'm okay for that one.
I think I'm.
Okay, so we're good. All right, so I think we need to table reports, is there any urgent business or any other comments that anybody feels? Asked made before we adjourn? That first shutting down conversation, um, do we need an executive session? No. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Wendy, thank you, second.
I'm happy to second.
To adjourn, okay, all is in favor of adjourn.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thank you very much, thanks S J for coming and presenting.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.